I apologize, I couldn't find my link to go to the website. But I got here. Hope everybody's staying warm and I apologize running late. It looks like we have a quorum and all our sitting board members on the line. And we so appreciate that. So I think we can call to order the meeting this morning. And start moving forward. Is there anything else that I missed maybe in some of the discussion before I got on?
Nope.
All right, all right. So with that, Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a, oh, yes, yes, Mr. Sanchez?
Good morning, Board Chair Sweeney. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Robert Sanchez. I'm with the Office of the Attorney General, Open Government Division, and I will be sitting in for Carla Solari at today's meeting and during your deliberations and decision. I've prom, she's moved off to, Carla's moved off to Tennessee. I told her that she owes me two bottles of fine Tennessee whiskey for helping her. So I'll be glad to share those with you offline. Thank you very much, and it'll be a pleasure working with all of you folks.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, and apologize. I know we had touched base and I meant to make sure that you were formally introduced to our board. And so with that, board members, did you have any comments or anything, questions for Mr. Sanchez? All right, well, welcome, Mr. Sanchez, and we welcome your guy, your legal mind as we handle board matters. And thank you for stepping in for Ms. Solaria. I know there are big shoes to fill. She was a wonderful legal guide to us. So but I appreciate your, of course, your presence and your guidance as well as we navigate our meeting today. Thank you. So with that, Ms. Jones, would you mind, just for the record, since we are going to be deliberating this morning, doing a roll call to just document who all our board members present?
Yes, I will. Good morning, Member Bitzer, are you present?
I am indeed.
I see you. Member Ely?
Present.
Member Garcia? Member Honker?
I am present.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Good morning, I'm present.
Hi, Chair Sweeney?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Okay.
Appreciate that. And so with that, I'm just pulling up, sorry about this. Or making sure I have our meeting agenda here. Give me one second. Sorry, I was operating on two different computers here this morning. So with that, I believe we have on our meeting agenda, I know Ms. Jones, you had sent that to me. All right, I have it here. Sorry about that. All right. Okay, sorry, pulled up wrong one. Little behind this morning. One second. I had it downloaded on this other computer, give me a second. So I want to make sure I get the right agenda so we're not, all right, here we go. All right, so now we have approval of the agendas and next on our, on our item. Is there any other changes that we see members of the board, Ms. Jones, Mr. Sanchez? If not, yes, Member Honker?
Hearing none, I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Member Honker. Yes, Ms. Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just one question. I think we have a final order to approve. I'm not sure if we have to vote on that. The final order for the Rule 101 to approve. I don't know if that needs to be on the agenda or not, or if we're even going to vote on it.
Yes, Mr. Sanchez, do we need to add that to the agenda today?
If it's an action item, and it sounds like it would be a vote on some form of order that's pending before the board, that would have to have been on the agenda that was published within the 72-hour period. It would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act to amend the agenda at this point. You could certainly discuss it as an informational item. But if it's an action item, it would have to have been on the agenda that was posted and published within the requisite 72 hours.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. So, Member Garcia, I think we'll follow up. We'll follow up and make sure that we get that that addressed, figure out the next steps for that particular order. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yes, Member Honker?
Was that the order on the, this the coal-fired power plant rule? Well, I thought that was finalized and signed.
Yes.
So it sounds like we don't need to do anything on that. I think we, we all agreed to that. And I saw a copy that you signed, Chair Sweeney, so.
Yes, Member Honker, thank you for that. Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
I thought this was the statement of reasons and we had to, I mean, I believe Mr. Sanchez could probably answer this for us, but the statement of reasons, we also had to make sure it went through the formal process of adopting. And is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Board Chair Sweeney, members of the Commission. I don't know what this particular practice is, but I represent kind of a parallel or sister agency, which is the Water Quality Control Commission. And typically, after there's been a meeting of the public body to deliberate and decide, the chair will, or the commission, in this case, the board, would delegate authority to the board chair to sign off on what is often called the Statement of Reasons or Decision. Basically, they're the findings and final order of the public body with respect to that particular matter that was pending. So typically, at least in, with regard to the Water Quality Control Commission, that doesn't come before the public body again for approval. It's usually by designated authority to the board chair. I don't know what the practice is with respect to this board.
Yes, Mr. Sanchez, you are correct. And I'm looking at my records and apologize, Member Garcia, I didn't have this right at my fingertips a minute ago. But yes, that Statement of Reasons has already been signed. That was signed on November 10, 2022. And as well as the, Ms. Solaria, before she moved on, had made sure that most, all the tasks associated with that rulemaking process were addressed. I also signed the transmittal form as well for publication that will be here coming up on November 29, 2022. But I signed the also transmittal on November 10 for that rule to be effective. Yes, Mr. Sanchez?
Well, Mr. Sanchez? I see your hand up and.
My apologies, Board Chair Sweeney, if it's Air Quality, EIB 2228, I'm looking at the board's docket and it shows that the Statement of Reasons and Final Order were entered on the docket on November 10 of 22.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Member Garcia, is that what you were asking about? And apologize, I didn't have it right at my fingertips when you asked.
Yes, if we don't have to vote on it, then it doesn't need to be on the agenda and we're good. Thank you.
Of course, thank you, but I'm glad you brought it up just so that we have clarity on where we are on that. I know we're going through a transition from Ms. Solaria to, you know, our next board legal counsel. So thank you all again for making sure that we don't, nothing falls through the cracks. It's been quite a transition. I fully realize how, how much value Ms. Solaria provided to the board during this transition, making sure everything was, was, was being tracked. And I know, Ms. Jones, you've been helping out a lot, so I appreciate that as well. So with that, I know we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. I think if there's no further comments or questions, Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a roll call vote for our meeting agenda for today?
Yes. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And so that takes us to the item number three, approval of October 28, 2022, regular meeting minutes. I know those have been distributed. I saw Ms. Jones' email on that. Members of the board, do you have any revisions or comments, suggestions or discussion points about those meeting minute notes? If not, I'd love to entertain a motion. Yes, Member Garcia?
I move we approve the October 28th regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Member Garcia, and I think Member Honker does beat you out, Member Bitzer, for the second. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on Member Garcia's motion?
Yes, to approve the October 28 minutes, Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Four, and that's the approval of the October 18, 2022, special meeting minutes. And again, those have been distributed. Is there any, yes, Member Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did note on item number three, action item, where it shows, Member Honker made a motion, there was a vote, and the, and it was two to two, so that motion did not pass. What happened after that was there was a break where stipulations were agreed upon by the parties, and then we had another vote which did pass unanimously after the stipulations were agreed upon by all the parties. So I suppose to fix this item, you know, we could either just skip to the last vote and show that it was unanimous. And we did deny the motion and ultimately, for this vote, it was two to two. So however, that can be fixed.
Oh, yeah, sorry, it cut out on me on that last part. Member Garcia, I don't know if that was my internet, but could you repeat that last portion about being fixed? It kind of got choppy.
Yes, I was just saying, there's a couple of ways it could be repaired. So however Ms. Jones wants to do that, I think we can. That would be fine.
I think the cleanest way would be to amend these minutes. Leave the vote that failed and insert that there was a break and, and a discussion and stipulated agreement, and then, and then provide the second vote.
Yes. Is that, Members, Member Garcia, what do you think about that suggestion?
I think that would work. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, are there any other comments or suggested revisions to the meeting minutes? Not, we do have one revision to the meeting minutes, but other than that, if there's nothing else, I'd love to have a motion. Yes, Member Honker?
I will approve, I will move we approve the minutes for the special meeting on October 18th, as amended according to the preceding discussion.
Thank you, Member Honker. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Member Bitzer, for your second. If there's no further discussion, I'm looking to our members. Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on Member Honker's motion?
Yes, to approve the minutes as amended. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Ely?
I'm going to abstain since I did not participate in that special meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, members of the board. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Five, that's the public comment agenda item, and I look to Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones, is there anybody who wanted to make public comment this morning?
Chair Sweeney, no one has reached out to me to make general public comment this morning.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. And all right, so if I'm just looking one more time to the platform here, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. So that will take us to our next agenda item, and that's Agenda Item Number Six, EIB 22-12, 22-15, 22-18, 22-19, 22-20, Tows Consolidated Matter. This is in regards to Permit Number GCP 3 Relocation RE 018925, Deliberation and Possible Decision. So this is in regards to hearing that we had a few weeks ago regarding the permit number GCP 3. And so I know Ms. Ms. Jones had sent a number of documents out, as well as the, all these documents are on the website docket. And so before us, we have our deliberations and decisions regarding this, this, this agenda item and this matter. With that, I know, Mr. Sanchez, I know we had talked to you, wanted to kind of do an opening to our board here on this item. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Board Chair. I just want to give the board a context in which they will be deliberating, in which you will be deliberating, and potentially or possibly making the decision. First, the first relevant statute is 74-2-7 subsection K, as in Karen, and it reads, "The burden of proof shall be upon the petitioner," in this case, petitioner is plural, "based on the evidence presented at the hearing," which would be the record, the whole record that's before you, "the Environmental Improvement Board shall," and there's three options, sustain, modify, or reverse "the action of the department." That's the relevant part. And then let me, let me go to the corresponding regulations. And those are found in Title 20, Chapter 1 of your regulations. And the first one I'll be reading from is 20.1.2.302, "The Burden of Persuasion." It says, "In a petition hearing," again, now petitioner is plural, "have the burden of going forward with the evidence and approving by," and this is the burden of proof, "by a preponderance of the evidence, the facts relied upon to justify the relief sought in the, in this case, plural petitions." Following the establishment of the prima facie case by the petitioners, any person opposed to the relief sought in the petition has a burden of going forward with any adverse evidence and showing why the relief should not be granted. And all that, that all happened at the hearing at which hearing officer Felicia Orth presided. But again, the burden of proof is a preponderance of the evidence. And if any of you are wondering what that means, there's, it's been interpreted a number of ways. But if you can all kind of imagine that very well-used blind statute of justice with a scale, a preponderance of evidence would be greater than 50% of, of the evidence for that particular point that's being sought to be proven. The other way to look at it is, it's that the fact is more probable than not, or it's the greater weight of the evidence, which is Black's Law Dictionary, Black's Law Dictionary. Then let me also read the portion that pertains to the deliberations and decision of the board. That's a 20.1.2.403, again, all of the, under the New Mexico Administrative Code. It reads, "The board shall reach a final decision on each adjudicatory matter at a public hearing." It references to the post, the going into executive session that doesn't pertain here. You didn't provide for that in your public notice or in your, in your vote-posted agenda. So you will be deliberating in public. And again, goes on to say it again, it's the caveat for the, for the closed session, that any final action or the decision in this case has to be open meeting. That's that's basically all that's relevant at this point. So I invite you to continue with, well, there seems to be a question there, but absent, after I've answered any questions that may have come up, I invite you to proceed with your deliberations based on the record of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I appreciate the summary and those references. Those will help us through our deliberation. And I see, Member Ely, you have your hand up. The floor's yours.
Yes, Madam Chair, no, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to remind the board that I did recuse myself in this matter and so that I will not be participating in the deliberations this morning, but I will be listening in.
Thank you, Member Ely, for that clarity and appreciate that information as well. Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Sanchez, I saw your hand up. I don't know if that, you meant to, to share some additional information with the board?
My apologies, I keep muting, I'm not unmuting myself and not getting the video going. Pam, there's, there's what, seven sitting members on this board?
Yes, we have a board of seven. We have one vacancy on the board right now that we're waiting to fill.
And we, we have how many present?
We have six members and then one, one that is recusing herself, so we have five.
Okay, that was my question, because typically, if it was an extension, it would be matter. But oftentimes, under parliamentary procedure, an abstention counts toward what constitutes a quorum, but we're okay. I just wanted to make sure that we hadn't run afoul of a quorum for this purpose. Thank you.
Of course, thank you for that double check for us, Mr. Sanchez. And just for clarity, we do have a quorum. We have five members. And then on right now, Member Garcia, Member Honker, Member Bitzer, and Vice Chair Trujillo Davis and myself on this matter. With that, I just want to look to members of the board if you have any other questions of clarity before we jump into this matter for our legal counsel, Mr. Sanchez, or in any of the documents that we've received. I just want to throw that out there before we start deliberations. I think we're all good. Nobody else has any questions or, or comments? And I do have a question for our board members is again, how we began our deliberations? Do we want to start with some of the topics? You know, with how NMD has, has framed it or has started to look at their final closing arguments and some of those decisions we need to make? Just would really, just want to reach out to the board and see if there's any comments in regards to that. Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
If I understand you correctly, Chair Sweeney, are you asking how maybe we should structure the deliberations?
Yes, Vice Chair.
I was thinking maybe we could start with just a quick review of the original issue or complaint, and then maybe just to establish where we are, what the original request was, and then move through there with the deliberations.
Okay, okay, is that for the other members of the board? What do you, is that, I know Mr. Sanchez did an overall as well. I don't know if we want some more on that, but I think he brought up some really good points of what we need to consider. Is there, I guess, yeah, I, I don't know if we, to your point of Vice Chair Trujillo Davis, do we want to maybe have another summary on that as we, we go over here? Are you talking like, so you want a original, quick review of the original issue?
Yeah, that's what I was just suggesting for where to start was to look at the the original request from the members of the petitioners and then NMD's request or NMD's response, and then start the deliberations from there based on the evidence that was submitted during the, the hearing? I'm just making a suggestion on where we start. Anybody else?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, you know, again, I'm going to go back to their, the petitioners' closing arguments. That seems to be the quickest and briefest. So we have the petitioners. Let me make sure. I'm going back to their final closings, petitioners' fact, finding the fact and conclusion as they see it, just to jump right in. So we have the Tows Gravel Products owns and operates their cedar hot plant, which is a hot and warm asphalt plant under the permit GCP 3-8925. There was that application for the relocation of the HMAP that Tows Gravel sought to move the plant to a property within the section and town range and township in the county of Tows. That property is owned by the Torres Living Trust, who leased it to the Tows Gravel for the purposes of mining aggregates and related products, including gravel. So then, just for recollection, March 17, 2022, Tows Gravel submitted its first application to move the, the facility to the site. In the application, Tows Gravel, when responding to the GCP 3 multi-form, and the question, "Any co-located particular sources?" responds, "None now, but there could be one in the future." and the question, any co-located particular sources? Response, none now, but there could be one in the future. Again, just looking at also in this summary, some of the other considerations is the control measures that will be used on the haul roads to meet the fugitive emission requirements as described in the general construction permit. There's an aspect of using water plus space course and as one of those control measures. And then there was March eighteen, twenty twenty-two's, a second application for the same relocation. Another one on April first, twenty twenty-two Towes Gravel with its third application for the same relocation. And then in that third application Towes Gravel reported maximum proposed three hundred tons per hour. The area of the storage pile and operations as five acres, which were the same values as the prior applications. However, on the first application, first version, the, as there's a issue, this is one of the other things that was brought up during the hearing is the estimated number of haul trucks that's traveling at the site was increased from seventy to round trips a day to a hundred ninety trips a day. Again, more than doubled and almost triple. So this is again, goes back to the control measures that were discussed during the hearing. So I won't go into those details, just trying to do high level. Then on April fifth, twenty twenty-two, the permit writer reviewed the application, the permit writers, same in a basis narrative, the permit modification was described as relocation and substitution of equipment. The permit writer calls citizens were receive, calls from citizens were received prior to the arrival of the application. Over thirty individuals submitted written comments. That's from NMD's exhibits. Certification by facility owner, operator, authorized representative is required again before public, before a notary public for the GCP three permit. And so that was another discussion item brought up during the hearing. Again, the permit application itemizes or criteria for a denial of a registration, including one, facility cannot continuously meet terms and conditions of the permit as described. Two, if any criteria listed in twenty dot two dot seventy-two dot two oh eight NMAC are applicable. So the petitioners did bring up some of these items regarding the NMAC requirements and criteria as part of the application process. So I'm just trying to speed up here. So I guess, you know, we have, you know, one, how things from what I recall at the hearing and then from my notes is, you know, the application kind of evolving. And then, you know, a question of also administrative processes regarding the permit, the, the NMAC requirements and the criteria that were discussed. There's a lot more items, but I, I guess for me, that's the summary. And I think Mr. Sanchez summarized that earlier too. So I took that from the petitioners. I know NMD had their, their response and how they've had their closing argument as well. And so I just want to acknowledge that as well. And that, you know, they were also referring to the requirements under NMAC and the department feeling that the department's approvals were timely. So they were providing response that those requirements under the NMAC, the NMAC, I guess, details and criteria were being met. And so the Bureau, NMD talked a little bit about that in their closing arguments as well as during the hearing. And then also the concerns or the, the statement from NMD that the petitioners presented no evidence that the relocation will cause or contribute to any exceedance of any state or federal air quality standards. So there was that element in the petitioners, I guess, case where they were concerned about contributing to the exceedance of any state or federal air quality standards with the relocation and the evolution of the permits through the process. So I know Mr. Sanchez had provided a, a summary of some of the considerations that were, that are before the board. So I hope I gave a good summary there. And members of the board, I also, I know you took a lot of notes too, but just going over my notes here, those were some of the high topic of the items. And as Mr. Sanchez framed it before the board, kind of three different, I guess, options or considerations is one to sustain or to modify or reverse what the decision from NMD was at the time. I hope I summarize that quickly, as quickly as I can with the notes, but please, members of the board, please, you know, the floor is open and our deliberations are open and I encourage any, any additional information that you want to share as part of these deliberations. And if I missed anything that we need to bring up to, to the forefront to consider as well. And also, Mr. Sanchez, if I missed anything, please let us know as well. Yes, Member Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
All right, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I, the deliberation isn't, if, if you just run afoul of any legal requirements, I'll certainly try to rein you back in, but I, I don't want to in any way actively participate in your deliberation, at least the substance of it. I don't want to become the, the eighth board member here. So I'll, I'll just leave the deliberations to yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. And Member Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your review of some of the items brought up by the petitioners and NMD's responses. I think overall, I think the petitioners brought up some very valid concerns regarding how this plant would impact their quality of life, general quality of life. They're concerned about dust, noise, whether they meet air quality standards, how they're going to water down the roads when there's not a well on site. I mean, they, they brought up, you know, very valid concerns and I have I have appreciation for their concerns. I don't think I would want a hot mix asphalt plant moving down the road for me either. I, I do know that when an applicant when a permatee brings in an application, and this is for a relocation, they already have the GCP three permit, this is for a relocation. It's very common for the applicant to be, to miss pieces in the application. It's perhaps not complete. The department lets the applicant know what pieces are missing. And they go back, correct those deficiencies and, and send it in again. That's, that's very common. It, it, it may appear to the public sometimes that, you know, the application wasn't correct to begin with, so it shouldn't be approved, but it's in the regulatory field, it's very common for the applicant to, to be missing parts. And the regulatory agency would then let them know what parts are missing, what they need to work on and they resubmit it. So I think that happened in this case. And once they get all the components of the application, then the department can deem it administratively complete. And then they start their technical review. And in the technical review, there's, there's questions and back and forth with the applicant many times. So the applicant does get an opportunity to go back and make changes as appropriate. That's, that's pretty normal. And I think that's what happened here. And so I believe the, the department is limited in whether or not they can deny a permit. It has to be based on, well, there's four criteria by which they can deny a permit. And if those, if they don't find that criteria, they really don't have a choice about approving the permit or not. If everything's there and the permatee showed that they would meet the requirements and the regulations and not exceed standards, then the department pretty much has to approve the permit. I think the department did scrutinize the calculations. There was discussion about it. The department, I believe, reviewed all the technical information in the application and went through a, a very detailed review. I think the petitioners were concerned and they spent a fair amount of time in the hearing about how could the permatee meet requirements to water down the road when there's no well on site or they didn't identify how they're getting water. The department stated that they, they require that they water down the road, but they don't have to, they don't have to show where they're getting the water from. And, and that's, that's not unusual in a a permit as, as well. There may be permit conditions that are required by the permatee, but the department doesn't prescribe exactly how they meet them. They just have to meet them. So in this case, I think the permatee would be hauling in water. That's not unusual for some of these sand and gravel operations and, and hot mix plants to hauling water. And I believe that's what they're going to do. Now, I would hope that the the permatee respects their neighbors and does water down the road as frequently as necessary to keep the dust down. You know, we have a lot of wind in New Mexico and I think that could very well be a problem. So I would hope that the permatee would, would adhere to the permit conditions about watering down the road. Because that's a very valid concern that it would be very dusty out there. The petitioner also brought up concerns about zoning, which the department and the board, of course, don't have any jurisdiction over zoning concerns. And perhaps they'll bring that up with the county or whoever they need to bring it up with. I'm, I know that they had witnesses, they brought in witnesses that talked about what they saw at the site and seeing activities, seeing they, they thought the site might be too close to the National Monument, the they, they expressed those concerns and they had witnesses that talked about what they saw. Unfortunately, there wasn't any real hard evidence. Other than hearsay, there wasn't real hard evidence about showing that the requirements and the regulations would not be met. So they, they did not prove that adequately. So I believe the department issued the permit appropriately. I think they put in the appropriate conditions. And I hope that the department will find the time to go and inspect the facility and make sure that they're following the permit conditions. I do, I do appreciate that the community has, has some very valid concerns. I just, I don't see that the department issued this permit in error. I think that they issued the permit appropriately with the appropriate conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia, for sharing your, your perspective on the, on this, this issue and some of the topics that were shared during the hearing and during the arguments. Members of the board, do you have any thoughts on, on the, on some of those topics? Yes, Member Honker.
Apologies for barking dogs in the background, but I, I did pretty thoroughly review the, the, well, all of the closing arguments and the, a good bit of the transcript actually. Because I, I, I'm kind of seeing this the same way as Member Garcia sees it. There were some concerning issues raised. Obviously, it was a very messy application process, confusing to members of the public. But it, it all boils down to, did they, did they meet NMD's requirements? Did NMD properly look at air emissions and make a proper determination there? And, and I, I, I concur with Member Garcia. I couldn't find evidence in the record that really showed that the, the process that NMD went through and the, the technical decision-making was in error. I do think there was a significant issue with this crusher operation, which the, the petitioners said was, had been operating at times on, on the, on the relocation site. It does appear that's, at least the record indicates that they didn't have a permit for a crushing operation. So again, as, as Member Garcia said, I, I think it would be appropriate for NMD to do some enforcement oversight down the road to just make sure everything is in accordance with what has been approved out there. So I, I kind of, I'm, I'm concurring with, with Member Garcia in terms of the, the bottom line that she reached.
Thank you, Member Honker. Yes, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Something Board Member Honker said kind of raised a, a flag for me. There were three commissioners, or rather, board members that actually attended the hearing. That was you, the Chair, Board Member Garcia and Board Member Bitzer. Board Member Honker indicated that he had reviewed the transcript. I'd like to actually make inquiry so we don't have a problem with the record to make sure that the remaining commissioner is thoroughly familiar and not so much with opposing arguments. But because what's, what the focus here has to be is the hearing record. In other words, a verbatim transcript. So I, we need to ensure here for the record that the two commissioners who were participating in this deliberation were sufficiently familiar with the record to be able to participate in this, in the deliberation and the decision-making. So Madam Chair, if you would, make inquiry of, of those two commissioners as to whether they're sufficiently familiar with the record. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for, for making sure that we're, we're compliant. And so with that, Member Honker, I know one of the reasons why we, we didn't deliberate right away is because we knew that we had to do the transcript and we knew that we had to give those members that weren't able to attend that ability to come up to speed. So to address that concern and that item, Member Honker, would you be able to confirm that you've reviewed the material and that you are up to speed with what took place during the hearing? And as you indicated earlier, some of the other submittals?
Yes, I, I actually did review the entire transcript. I, I won't say I read every word of it, but I, I reviewed the entire thing, looking for points and witnesses and that sort of thing. So I, I feel like I'm, I'm up to speed on on the, the discussion there.
Thank you, Member Honker. And I think it was, was it Vice Chair Trujillo Davis? You were the other member that wasn't present for the whole time or present for the hearing. Would you be able to confirm the same as Member Hunker? Or explain to me, to us for the record, what your familiarity is with all the material?
Yes, thank you. And I, I would really just like to thank Mr. Sanchez for asking us to do this. I think it's a really important step, especially if we haven't had all the board members present for the hearing. I did review the, all the material. I used many of the the final documents, the closing arguments and the hearing officer's report, and then use the the transcript to reference some of the points that were made in those arguments. So I did not read the transcript verbatim beginning to end. I used it as a reference document and read some highlights from it here and there as I, as things popped up. But I feel that I am familiar enough with the, with arguments made by both the parties. So hopefully that is, instills some confidence in the decision that I'm making today. If not, I completely understand.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Yes, Mr. Sanchez.
Just, just one matter for the record. It's my understanding from having reviewed the, the entire transcript and looking at the docket that there was no hearing officer's report in this instance. If I'm wrong about that, please correct me, but just for the record, my understanding is that none was requested from this source. And so none was, was produced. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Sanchez, that's, that's correct. No, no hearing report was produced.
I apologize. The name of the document that I was reading from that had misorth was the proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. I said it the wrong way.
Does that clarify your question and Mr. Sanchez and address the points that you were bringing up?
Yes, I'm fine. I'm just trying to preserve the record. Thank you.
Absolutely, and we need that. So that's why you're, you're so essential, Mr. Sanchez. Appreciate it. And I see that we lost connection with Member Garcia. I just received a text. She's trying to log back in, Ms. Jones. So can you keep an eye out for her?
Sure will.
With that, you know, I know she's one of the members that was there during the hearing and can we take a five-minute break, allow her to jump back on? Okay, wonderful. So we'll be back at, at ten oh five. Little longer than a five-minute break. All right, we're back. And Member Garcia, how, how you doing?
Yeah, thank you so much. Sorry about that. I, Comcast is terrible at my house. I lose internet quite frequently. So sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. And I see, Mr. Sanchez, you have your hand up?
Yes, Board Chairman. If you'd know for the record, the time that the board is reconvening, that'd be great.
Okay, we're coming back from break. It was ten oh five on my calendar when we stepped back on. And so I appreciate that. Making sure we have that time check for the record as well. And so welcome back, everybody. I think, and, and Mr. Sanchez, I just wanted to do one other check with you. I know we heard from Member Hunker and Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Is that sufficient for the record, their confirmation of the review of the material?
Madam, Madam Chair, that, that's entirely up to the, the board itself. I would certainly encourage a very robust, full, complete opportunity for every board member to have a say. So that, that's entirely up to your discretion. But again, I think the preference is that there be a very full opportunity and a very, for a robust discussion and deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you for that. So yes, and, and thank you, Member Hunker and Member Trujillo Davis for just going through that exercise to confirm your review and breadth of understanding of the materials and, and member, members of the board. I, I feel comfortable. I don't know if there's any hesitation on, on that and of their review of the material and to be part of our deliberation. I'm looking to Member Bitzer, Member Garcia, if you have any concerns or input. I just want to be robust in our discussion.
I, I've worked with, with these two for quite a while and they certainly are quick studies and get a thorough grasp of that which they review. So I'm very comfortable with their participation.
Thank you, Member Bitzer. And Member Garcia, what are your thoughts?
Other than what I expressed earlier, I don't have any additional thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Member Garcia. Uh, Member Garcia, did you, I, I don't know at what point you felt your internet went, went wacky, if I can put it that way. So did you hear the discussion that we had about the other two members? Their, their, that were not present during the hearing and their the consideration that we put on record, their review and confirming their review of the material? Did you hear that discussion?
I, I heard part of Member, Member Hunker's comments. I did not hear Vice Chair Trujillo Davis's comments.
Okay, all right. And, and not to put you back on the spot, yes, Member, or sorry, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But I, I'm neither board member nor am I a Garcia, although there are someone Garcia's in my family, which I I very much care about. But for Board Member Garcia's benefit, basically the question I had of the two commissioners who are not participating in deliberation but were absent from the hearing itself, whether they were sufficiently familiar with the record to be able to participate during deliberations. And in summary, they both certified or affirmed for the record that they were.
Sorry, Mr. Sanchez, I'm looking at my screen.
That's okay.
Yeah.
You, you can adopt me.
Member Garcia, can you adopt her and you and her family? Yeah, apologize. So, so Member Garcia, I just wanted to make sure again for the record, you know, and, and, and also to assure the public and all parties that, you know, we're, we're, we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, that we're all in, in alignment. And, and so I just wanted to go through that exercise to address what, what Council Sanchez had brought up right before break. So if, if we're good going forward, and as Mr. Sanchez said, both Vice Chair Trujillo Davis and Member Hunker did confirm that they've reviewed the material, I feel comfortable going forward with deliberation. All right. So since we've addressed that particular item, I know, Member Hunker, in your summary, you provided some input and discussion with, is there, for Member Bitzer or Vice Chair Trujillo Davis, do you have any, any further discussion points or what your, what your thoughts are on some of these items and issues that have been brought forth by the parties? Yes. Member Bitzer is looking over to you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis.
Well, just to kind of bring us back around, I thought Member Garcia had a really good summary of, of the issues. For me, I thought that that the public brought up many valuable points, not just in their concerns for the immediate project and how it affected their, their lives, but also in observation of the NMD process and how, how the public interacts with that process and, and it moves forward. And I, and backing up a little bit, I, I think, you know, a lot of their observations are so important because they see the day-to-day operations. They, they are observers of it, if not, you know, actually on site. And I, I just don't think that can be discounted because it is such a valuable component. However, when I took a step back and I, and I looked at the issue as a whole, I went back to the legal argument that was being, being made. And so for, for me, and what I felt was the correct process forward was that sorry, I made a bunch of notes on this and now I'm trying to, trying, trying to summarize them all up here. But, but to me, I fell back on the legal argument and I, I didn't feel that there was enough evidence presented to to support the burden of proof. And I hope that NMD looks at this as a really valuable example of how important it is to communicate with the public and to to help get it right. And I also hope that the public and all the people that participated in this continue to observe what's going on in their communities and actively participate in what's going on in the communities. You know, maybe in this instance, they didn't get the win or they may not get the win that they want, but it doesn't mean that it won't happen next time. And it doesn't mean that those points aren't considered ea- each time an issue like this is brought up. And so that was my, my observations on it at this point.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. I don't know if any other members have, I saw some shaking heads there. And I know we haven't heard yet from Member Bitzer.
Yeah, I want to echo the need for good, open approachable communications between the department and the public. And also second or third, the, or fourth, the sentiment that, that Member Garcia made an excellent summary of, of the current situation. So really, I just want to, want to echo what she said.
Thank you, Member Bitzer. And I think for, for, for me, I, I, Member Garcia, appreciate you starting off these deliberations as always with your insight and your due diligence and explanation. I, I also want to just touch upon the concern that always, again, with rules and regulations and processes that have been, you know, already in place, that, you know, when, when issues, you know, maybe get brought up, sometimes in general, we get to the point where we have existing rules and regulations we have to sort of test back to. We have to look at what is, what is presently or currently applicable in those processes. And again, I want to also just note that there were a lot of concerns brought up by, by the by the community members there around the asphalt back, or sorry, around the, the facility. And this issue of, you know, new permits, the evolution of the permits. And I feel also that, you know, the process, the process has been very onerous for and detailed for the community members to the point where, you know, we have to almost have, you know, legal representation to navigate all of these processes. And I find that, you know, for our community members here in New Mexico that to, to make sure that they are participating in the process that is it, I think, Member Hunker, either on this matter or on a previous matter, had brought up, you know, it wasn't initially envisioned that, you know, to have public participation that we need, that they need legal counsel. And, you know, to have that breadth of experience and/or expertise puts a, you know, kind of a deterrent or, 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 you know, a difficulty for our general public to participate in these processes. And so I just want to note that because, again, having gone back through everything, looking at all the references and looking back at NMAC references, looking back at the processes and procedures. And then even having just gone through some will-making processes ourselves, you know, the detail that is required and understanding of how everything fit together. And to me, at times does require that very high and breadth of experience and expertise in compliance, rules and regulations. And that's a field I deal with in. And so, but I don't expect, you know, Joe Smith down the road to, to know that breadth or to have that experience to know, okay, you got to go to, you know, NMAC, you know, twenty dot, you know, whatever. So I just want to note that because hearing from the community members and Tows and their concerns as well and trying to navigate the process, I could feel and I could hear that that was a difficulty and one of the challenges for the community members as part of this case and this issue. So I just want to, I guess, just, just note that, that I did hear that and I did feel that. And, and so as we move forward, one of the, the challenges though is, you know, we, we go back to these written processes and materials and to what NMD's, Mr. V. Hills walked us through and also in the closing arguments and kind of having to navigate that road and walk down those roads of legal arguments or general arguments. It is very hard to go beyond what my fellow board members have kind of outlined and articulated. So I, you know, I, but I do want to note that there are those concerns about air quality that were brought up. And also for, for the department, which I know the department is also very stretched and very much tasked with a whole host of mandates and, and expectations, not only from the executive side, but also from our and, and from their grants and all of those requirements internally, but also from our public to address some of the concerns and have oversight once permits are, are then provided or approved and then the oversight. And I know that's a very, you know, difficult balancing act as well for our department and and, but, but it is something that I just want to highlight, that is very much needed, is how we make sure that our general public is, is protected and our air quality, our environment quality. That is very important, especially in, in rural New Mexico and some of our, and even in the, in the big cities. So I just want to also voice that, that concern as well. And, and give, give light to that as well. So, you know, but again, as I share all that, we have a delineated process. We have things that we have to look to, whether things were, whether, you know, proper notification was done. What is the existing process? And when I look at that, I'm also coming to the same conclusion as many of the board members. That this is the delineated process. This is the outline process. The, the department did do this, did you know, make these steps, make these determinations. Yes, the, as was mentioned earlier by one of the fellow board members, the evolution of the permitting process was not, it was, it was a little messy. But it was a process that the petition, that the Um, but it was a process that the petition, that the, um, Tows gravel did follow and, and their consultant as well as the department. So, um, with that, I'm also kind of ending up in the same conclusion based on the existing processes. But with that, again, whenever things like this come up, um, is also to Vice Chair Trujillo Davis's points. Really, we need that support and the, the, you know, the prod, the state departments need those, those inputs from public to say, hey, we might have and, you know, a deficiency or something that we need to amend or change in the future to address some of these concerns. And, um, in the process or in the regulations themselves and to be engaged in that process. So, um, with that, I know I've talked along a lot around everything, but I really feel, um, as my fellow board members were coming to, uh, an area where I think we're seeing the same pathway to where we're, where we need to go. So I don't know if anybody has any other input to that. Yes, Member Hunker.
Just to reinforce what, what you said, Chair Sweeney and also, uh, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. This isn't the first asphalt or gravel operation we've seen come before us uh, since I've been on the board. Um, and, uh, I do hope that N M E D will do all they can within existing resources, which, which is a significant constraint that they have. But, uh, you know, the, these sorts of operations, when you look at the state as a whole, they may not be the largest sources of air pollution, but for the folks living around them, they're a huge deal and they can be a major nuisance. And so, um, both from public involvement and, uh, the compliance stand, standpoint, uh, they, they deserve as much attention as N M E D can give, give to them. Uh, so just, I just wanted to, uh, kinda share that, that perspective that my fellow board members already voiced.
Thank you, Member Hunker. Uh, the members of the board. Um, Mr. Sanchez, I saw your hand up there for a minute.
That, that was inadvertent. I was, uh, I, I pressed the wrong, I toggled the wrong button. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Appreciate that. So to the members of the board, I don't know if there's any further discussion on this. I, I did wanna actually, uh, share one more thought as Member Hunker was talking. It reminded me, uh, as I was writing down notes, one other thing that I'm also seeing, you know, I think the issue about the water and, you know, how they're gonna, how the Tows gravel will be addressing the, the, the road issue, the additional trucks and the evolution of the permitting process and how it went up a little bit higher to the number of trucks per day. And having been on construction sites, I do know how very dusty it can get. And then this element of do they have enough water to then, uh, water source and also water rights? And, and so what I also have noted too on a number of other issues as well as other, other issues across the board, whether from O A S State Engineers Office or Interstate Shing Commission about water rights is, there's also a very, um, binning of, um, you know, what's in E I B's realm, what's in, you know, the different committees, water qualities, uh, while water quality control commissions realm. And so there's these very defined boxes, but we have these elements like on permit processes where it says, okay, well, we're gonna have so much water, um, to mitigate the dust, to have dust control mitigation measures. But where does that water come from? But that's not in our bucket to then go and, or in N M E D's bucket to go and, and follow up on, okay, do we have, um, enough water to actually address the dust control issues? And so I, I just bring that point up because, um, again, just encourage N M E D and the state as we look at, you know, um, any type of development or, you know, operations such as this, there's different elements that ensure that the operation can, can operate as a whole. Um, and but are, again, back into our little box, our little box is this process related to these air quality permits. But I just wanted to note that, that I just have been seeing that, um, in multiple situations where there's elements that cross over, um, to other departments or other boards and commissions. But we've also gotta figure out how we stay within tho- those boxes. But it's just something that's in the back of my mind as well. Um, so I just wanted to share that as well. Thank you. And, and members of the board, I don't know if you have additional thoughts or if we're kind of in the same, going on down the same road here. And if we are, yes, Member Garcia.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that, um, I, I also, you know, we have said many times, uh, you shouldn't have to have an attorney to come before the board and you don't. You don't have to have an attorney. And I think that, uh, Ms. De Rosier did an outstanding job navigating through this hearing process. They did, you know, they, they tried really hard to prove their, it's an uphill battle with the burden of proof. They tried really hard to prove their case and I think they put on a very good case. So I just wanted to, to commend Ms. De Rosier for, and all of, and, and all the citizens for their hard work. And I hope that they're not discouraged. If we feel that they didn't meet the burden of proof, I hope they're not discouraged and, um, and that, uh, they continue communicating with the department if they feel that the permutee is not following the requirements. And, uh, I appreciate hearing from the public in these matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Garcia. Appreciate those comments. Any other board members have any additional comments? Um, and it does sound like we're going toward a consensus here, uh, with our, our discussion and, so I'm just looking to members of the board, what your thoughts are. If we're moving toward a general direction to then, um, come to a motion or some action by the board in our deliberations. Or if there's any other elements that we have not, um, addressed as part of this. So, Mr. Sanchez, yes.
No, Madam Chair, if, uh, if there's no further discussion by the board or any further comment, the appropriate thing would be to entertain a motion, an appropriate motion, uh, for whatever action the, the board, um, determines is appropriate here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for that guidance or that, um, that input. So with that, members of the board, I, I, I do feel like, um, you know, our discussions have been going down the same path, uh, where we're, we have a consensus somewhat and, but again, the floor is open. If there's any elements of any of the petitioners or N M E D's, uh, response or even, uh, as well as, um, Tows gravel's, uh, documents that we need to, uh, discuss or, or, um, deliberate on, um, please bring those forth. But I think, um, as I look at my notes and, and the, the transcripts and the documentation, those are, I think we've touched upon, um, the elements of, um, the, what's been submitted before the board. Yes, Member Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, at this time, I would move that we uphold G C P dash three permit eighty-nine twenty-five uh, issued by the Environment Department.
I'll take it that.
Uh, Mr. Sanchez, I look to you to see if we need to, um, add or revise or if there's elements that we need to add in that motion. Mr. Sanchez?
This is gonna sound like I'm parsing things a lot, but in the language of seventy-four dash two dash seven K, it's, uh, would be to sustain rather than uphold. So, uh, or Member Garcia, if you would not mind, uh, amend the emotion to use the word sustain, that'd be preferable. Uh, and then you'll, of course, uh, Chair Sweeney, uh, require a second, uh, uh, open it for discussion on the motion before the floor and then a roll call vote by Mrs., uh, by Pam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. And, um, Member Garcia, before you move, I see Member Hunker's hand up.
Well, and I, I think we also need a something, a rationale piece to it as well, just as we've done in the past.
Yes, thank you, Member Hunker. Um, is that, uh, Mr. Sanchez, would you like, as, as our legal counsel here today, would you like that included in our motion, um, the, a statement of basis or a rationale?
That works for me, whatever is your practice. Uh, what I'll be doing, depending on the outcome of the, of what may be an amended motion, I'll be preparing a statement of reasons and decision and we can talk about those after, uh, the roll call vote is taken. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. And Mr. Sanchez has been, uh, you know, I know we're transitioning to new legal counsel, but, um, Ms. Solaria, we, has been very diligent, making sure that we have, uh, a rationale behind our motion when we make some of these, um, decisions. So if, uh, turn it back over to you, Member Garcia, um, as, as you, uh, see fit in, in incorporating the input from our legal counsel, Member Hunker, in your motion.
Yes, uh, I would move that we, um, was the word sustaining? Okay, I would.
It is.
Okay, I would move that we, uh, sustain the issuance of permit G C P dash three eighty-nine twenty-five issued by the New Mexico Environment Department. Due to the fact that the petitioners failed to meet the burden of proof to prove that the permit was issued improperly. And, uh, due to the fact that, uh, we feel that the permit was issued appropriately by the Environment Department.
I'll take it that.
Thank you, Member Garcia. And Member Bitzer for your second. And the floor is still open, uh, for any further discussion. And so I'm looking to our members and please stop me if, uh, uh, I think we're now, Mr. Sanchez, we're now at the mo- at the position where we will do a roll call vote on Member Garcia's motion. I don't see any further discussion.
Correct. You, you have a, a motion on the floor with a second. There appears to be no further discussion. My apologies, there appears to be no further discussion. So it'd be appropriate for, uh, Pam to have a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on Member Garcia's motion and Member Bitzer's second?
I will. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Garcia?
Yes.
Excuse me. Thank you. Member Hunker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Um, and then I'm gonna look to Mr. Sanchez. Is there anything from a a legal standpoint where we need to address as part of, before we move on to the next agenda item now that we addressed, um, and had deliberation and a decision on that, on this, um, uh, on this agenda item?
Madam Chair, no, I'm looking at twenty point one point, I'm sorry, twenty point one point two point four oh three, subsection B, uh, calls for a final order containing fines in fact, conclusions of law. I will be preparing that proposed, uh, document or decreedal document. Depending on the board's pleasure, it can either, uh, come before the full board for, for formal, uh, approval or as is at least the case in my, uh, companion agency, the, the board will, will authorize the board chair to review the document and then, uh, sign it on behalf of the entire board. That's whatever your, whatever practice you prefer.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. And I, I look back to the members of the board. What is your pleasure? We can have it come before us again or would you, um, like need a review and, and sign off on it? Yes, Member Hunker?
I would move that we, uh, authorize the board chair to, uh, review and sign the final order in this matter that we just deliberated on.
I'll take it that.
Thank you, Member Hunker. And Member Bitzer, uh, any discussion item on that motion? Uh, let's see. If not, um, yes, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on Member Hunker's motion?
I will. Uh, Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Garcia?
Yes.
And Member Hunker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And, um, again, still on this item, Ms. Mr. Sanchez, yes, the floor's yours.
Just one small matter, Madam Chair. Uh, I don't know if there's any time constraints here typically. In other boards and commissions that I handle, they have a certain amount of time in which to render and issue their, uh, their legal decision. Uh, I, I don't know if there's one here, but I would look to, uh, the board chair and perhaps to counsel for N M E D and the permutee as well as the pro se litigants to apprise me of any time constraints that I need to be mindful of.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I, I do believe there are some time constraints. And I'm looking at the, the, the folks online here, um, and I wanna just double check with N M E D. I see, uh, Ms. Katz and Mr. V. Hill here for N M E D.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members, uh, uh, I am, I'm looking at the rules right now just to make sure. So, uh, as you folks discuss, I'm, I'm doing a quick, uh, review of, of the rules to look at, um, deadlines here.
Thank you, Mr. V. Hill. Um, I'm also looking at the rules. We're looking just so I can be, uh, double checking, but, um, yes, and I, I do see, um, wanna, Kim, yes. Did you wanna, um, and I see Mr. Dennis Romero as well, uh, on, on the platform. Kim, would you like to, um, address this question that's come up?
I'll actually defer the question to Sherri Popham who's on the line and, uh, Sherri has, uh, timing issues that are relevant and, uh, on another matter that's, um, running parallel to this one.
Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Popham, do you, um, have any input on this in terms of timing?
The only input that I would put at this point is that we have made an appeal to the county for the grandfathering of the operation of this facility. That will be heard on the thirtieth of this month. Uh, so it, it might be helpful if that was a possibility to have that information prior to that time. But we will be moving ahead nonetheless with the appeal with the county, uh, Tows County at that time.
Thank you for that information, Ms. Popham. And I'm looking to Mr. Romero.
Uh, Madam Chair, thank you very much for this opportunity and sorry about the glare on my, on my, uh, video here. Uh, this, just speaking on behalf of, of, of permutee Tows gravel, um, it, we would like to, of course, to, to, uh, you know, try, try to get a final decision in place as soon as possible just because, yeah, for the obvious reason that, um, you know, assuming all just proceeds on course, that, uh, Tows gravel can proceed with its operations pursuant to the terms of the, of the permit. So it sounds like, uh, Ms. Popham has, uh, you know, a, a separate interest, but, uh, our, our interest is, you know, parallel. For different reasons, we would just like to begin operating as soon as possible, just, you know, after affirmation of affirmation that the, uh, that the permit, uh, will be sustained.
Thank you, Mr. Ro- uh, Romero. And so I wanna look back. Look back to uh Mr. V Hill. And our Ms. Ms. Katz, um, if you have any input on the. On the timing from, from our, uh, from the department.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, there is no regulatory deadline that I see. And we don't have uh any deadline uh on our end and, and we're not opposed. To having it come out sooner uh either. Uh, I, I would suggest that um, you know, uh respectfully, that, that the board uh calendar a date. And I'm not sure maybe to accommodate every, you know, the other party's wishes. Um, and then that might be helpful um to, to have a date we can all look forward to, to receiving that on.
All right, thank you, Mr. V Hill, Mr. Sanchez.
Respectfully, that would not be my preference. I have multiple clients, I'm doing this by um assignment. So I would ask that the board allow me the, the time that I, I, I certainly will get it out as soon as possible, I hear the concerns. But I would strongly not prefer a, a fixed date by which I should have that document uh available to you for review and signature. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Sanchez, thank you for that input and um. Um, so. It looks like Mi- Mr. Sanchez, just again, just uh reconfirming, you, you will, I, I know, do your due diligence and get it to um. To, to myself as the chair as soon as you can. I think that's what you're.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, and, and to the members of the board and legal councils and um the petitioner as well. You know, I will continue to sort of bird dog this uh with Mr. Sanchez and see um and support the, the process and. Soon as I get it, I will turn it around um as soon as I get it. If that's, if that's sufficient where we, where we're at today. Yes, Mr. Sanchez?
Bird, bird dogging sounds like a horribly scary term, I, I will make every effort to get this out as, as quickly as possible, I, I think I've, I'm, I'm a little scared now, thank you.
I, I meant mostly bird dogging my emails in case I, in case to, to watch out for an email from, from your notification.
Okay.
That's my process of bird dogging myself. So not to scare you, Mr. Sanchez. With that, um, I think, Mr. Sanchez, is that the, the last remaining uh detail on this agenda item that we need to consider?
Yes, Madam Chair, you can move on to your next agenda item, we've concluded this one.
Thank you, a- and thank you, members of the board for your input, your engagement and participation. Um, and I look to Member Ely to, to jump back on, I think um she had, there you are. Yeah, so um, it looks like we'll be heading on to our next agenda item, which is adjournment. And um, and I think we've already kind of set our next meeting uh in the previous meetings um. For December, uh, and I'll, I'll keep track with Ms. Jones if there are any uh agenda items that come, come forth, then we'll get an agenda out. As soon as, uh, if there's additional agenda items. Yes, Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just, just kind of a, a footnote. As I indicated, I'm, I'm sitting in for uh by designation, this will be perhaps the only time I assist the board. Whereas perhaps all of you know, we are looking at a new Attorney General in January, our. Open Government Division Director who assigns counsel for the various boards and commissions is leaving on December second. Uh, so I don't know who you will have uh the pleasure of working with next time, but. Uh, I take the opportunity to thank all of you, I, I appreciate what a, what a nice. Participatory wards you are, and it's been a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, so. To members of the board, I know we're in flux in terms of our legal counsel, um, and so hopefully we'll hear soon. Who our um permanent uh legal counsel will be. With that, yes, uh, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Um, yes, so, thank you, I, uh, on the sixteenth, when we have our next meeting, we have a hearing scheduled for that. Day as well. And um, since I'm the hearing officer for, for that hearing, I just, I just wanna make sure we're, we're good as far as our. Legal counsel for that and um. That we'll be all prepared, so I'm just expressing my. Hoping you guys are all gonna tell me that it's gonna be fine, it's not very, so.
I, I agree, uh, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis, I was, I was, uh, you know, um. Uh, calling uh, uh, Ms. Laurie and, and Ms. Jones, and, and maybe, maybe be a question for Ms. Jones, um. Is there, is there, do you know, would you mind letting uh Vice Chair Trujillo Davis and myself know kind of the. I don't know if it'll be coming from you or from um the Attorney General's office, I know there's some um back and forth there. Uh, but, yeah, to, to remember uh Vice Chair Trujillo Davis's point, just as we, we, I just wanna make sure nothing falls between the cracks, so. I apologize ahead of time leaning on you, uh, Ms. Jones, but I know you've helped, you helped me through this, this part of the transition. So is that something you can um commit to Vice Chair Trujillo?
Absolutely.
And myself, okay?
Yes, as, 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 as I get any information, I will pass it on to the board members and uh. Uh, I, I think uh Carla expressed to me that um Counsel Sanchez would be. Uh, a temporary replacement at that point, uh, that, that Carla knew of, and so it could be on a meeting by meeting basis. But as soon as I know something, I'll let everyone know.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and Mr. Sanchez, I see your hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, Pam, what I, what I would suggest to you, which is what other boards and commissions, similar situations will typically do. If you'll send an email to uh Sally Malave, she's the Director of Open Government Division. Letting you know that there is a hearing scheduled for the sixteenth. Uh, and that she will need, or her successor, which is a little awkward here, again, she's leaving here very shortly. Whether uh that her or her successor should uh be mindful to appoint counsel to assist. Uh, the hearing officer during the upcoming hearing.
I will, yes, I'll, I'll make sure I do that today, counsel, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, and thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Bringing that issue, we had some further discussion there. With that, I'm looking to the members of the board, if there's no other discussion items, um, we look at number seven, our adjournment, yes, Member Honker? Oh. He froze, he froze there for a minute, Member Honker, at least on my end, could you, could you?
I, I, I don't know, something happened with my sound, but uh I'm, I move we adjourn.
Thank you, Member Honker. Member Bitzer's second, wonderful. Uh, with that, Ms. Jones, I don't see any further discussion, would you please do a roll call vote?
I will. Member Bitzer, your vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
I vote yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney, the motion passes and I believe we're adjourned.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, adjourned at ten fifty-one. Wonderful, everybody have a wonderful day and a wonderful weekend and stay warm out there.
Happy Thanksgiving too.
Yes.